Good morning, we will call the Pennington County Commission meeting for June 6th to order. We'll stand for a moment to sign up reflection and the pledge of allegiance led by Judge Jeff
Thank you. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, the next business is to review the agenda. Does anyone have any changes they wish to make to the agenda? If not, do we have a motion? Care to move to make, move some other motions to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
Have a motion in a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried. Next item is the consent agenda.
Good morning Commissioners, Holly Kennedy is Commission Office Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today, the consent agenda contains the following items. Number five is approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of May 20th, 2014, approval of vouchers in the amount of $39,070.51. To acknowledge the order of organization and incorporation of the Golden Slipper Road District for the tax year 2014 and after as submitted by the Auditor's Office. Number eight is to endorse the action of the Board of Trustees of the Spring, Canyon Springs Road District to de-annex property as submitted by the Auditor's Office. And finally, number nine is to approve the permit to occupy the right-of-way for the Black Hills Multi-Sports, Inc. as submitted by the Highway Department.
Does anyone wish any of the items on the consent agenda removed? Not, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. At this point in time, I would announce that Congresswoman Kristi Noem will be planning to arrive here about 9:30. And item 10 on the agenda is an issue that she will be addressing with us. And given the fact that we're in a different position here time-wise, if Dr. Cole is ready, we would ask her to come forward and address item 11.
Good morning, I'm here with Cole with the Pennington County Beeson to the Public Library. Just a brief report, our new director, the Director of the Library, Jim McShane, has been very well received. He's spearheading some new projects for the library. Employee morale is up. He's actually talking to all the regional Western South Dakota public librarians. And they're looking at working together more, forming some sort of a consortium to help save resources, costs. So he's making a lot of good progress. You have the report before you. From quarter to quarter, the statistics don't really change all that much. The third page may be of interest, that's a newer graph that the library has presented for you, which is, which shows the usage at the East Branch, the New East Branch. The total bar shows the number of items that have been checked out. The blue portion of the bar represents the items that have been checked out by Pennington County residents, not Rapid City residents or other county residents. The percentages aren't listed there, but if you calculate the percentages, the Pennington County users represent 30 to 40 percent of the items that are checked out at the East Branch, which is substantially higher than the percentage of the main branch, which usually represents about, looks like 17, 18 percent each month. Are there any questions?
The designation Rapid City and Oldham County, what is the Oldham County?
There are a few cardholders that are like Meade County, for instance, so they're non-Pennington County residents and they're non-Rapid City residents. So there aren't very many of those cardholders, but there is St. Lawrence County and King County.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I think we can, we don't have anyone here from the Auditor's Office. I'm sorry, we proceed back behind the judge. We'll proceed with item 12.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
I think Holly's going to get the provisional budget presentation up on beautiful screen, but I will summarize it for you. The department heads have, elected officials have submitted their budgets according to the budget goals set by the board. It includes a 1.4 percent increase to the wage scale, one merit increase for those that merited during the year, the increased premiums for health care, frozen levies and still keeps 20 percent reserves in general fund. The provisional budget as submitted is $88,226,165. It is supported by $40,625,071 of non-current tax revenue. It is supported by $38,526,594 in tax revenue. And we have cash reserves applied totally of $12,351,472. And 5 percent uncollected tax estimate of $3,276,972. And what that is, the uncollected tax revenue, is if, when you look at the Means of Finance tab, we have to levy according, I'm not sure, it's been as long as I've been around, at some point in time, we didn't collect as a whole, counties didn't collect 5 percent of their levy, we collect much higher than that. And so we have to levy additionally for that, so we can still always support the expenditures that we put forth. We make assumptions in the adjustments that I make each year to equal up to what we actually collect in property taxes, which is about 98 to 99 and a half percent. Our tax collection rate is very, very high. And we'll stay with that Means of Finance with the frozen levy. And you will look at, it shows, I reconfigured it so it's a little bit clearer for the board to analyze. I put the four county consolidated funds in there, and you will notice that I've added emergency disaster, which we haven't levied for in the past. And that simply means to be decided by the board in budget hearings if you want to replenish that back to the cash value that we netted using for last year. Shows your 5 percent factor, shows the miscellaneous revenues for county consolidated, cash reserves used, the tax revenues, and the max tax at the frozen levies that we can use. The next set is your three other levied funds that come into Pennington County. That's your county fire, Denny, the library contracts, and the unorganized road, which is simply being levied to move over in an operating transfer to, and is spent basically under the road and bridge. The next section under there, those are all your non-levable funds that have to be supported by either revenues coming in or cash reserves being used. And you'll see down there in road and bridge that $2 million is what Tom is going to use to apply to support his road and bridge. You will notice that we've had $20,000 of requests for Title III money, and that does have to come from reserves. If you go farther down, it shows you the basic last year's Means of Finance, the amount of the change, the percentage of change, it gives you the levy projections. As you can see, we had a levy for county consolidated at 5.21 last year. It's estimated at 5.210. I will work with that once we go through budgets and we get a final, final value. It just wasn't, it was so minimal, the amount that I would have to change it, I just left it. It depends upon how this rounds versus how the actual values were round. It shows you the 0 percent in county fire, library, and unorganized road. It shows you the difference in $100,000 worth of value for each of those. It shows you last year's levy, or values, this year's values, percent of change, and dollars of change. So that's basically, this is the most important piece of information that shows you how we're going to fund the budget as presented. You also have the Budget Summary tab there, thank you Holly, that shows the requests as a summary for each department. And then the next, the Cash Analysis tab, you will have to look at. It shows different, it shows the actual cash balances of all the funds, even your non-leved funds, which are in the purple, you know I love color. And from the first of the year down with the assumptions for both 2014 close, 2015 close, and then the calculation for the reserves. So that should give you all the information for those, as well as, clear down on the bottom portion of that, after you get to the percentages, is your value information, last year's information, frozen levy information. And when we say frozen levy information, which was your motion, you will use growth dollars and part of your consumer price, yeah, your CPI. And we go through a calculation, so we will be using stored CPI. Did I add that onto theirs? Okay, I now have a, on the new one, and I'll send it to, yes, we have stored CPI, but I've also added, and I'll send the new file to Holly. It's the document that comes from the Department of Revenue that shows where we're getting our stored CPI. There's history in there. And basically, to fund the request for 2015, we have an increase of 3.6 percent in the county general, 7.2 in library, 3.4 in secondary road, and rural fire of 4.2. It shows what the growth percentages are in there, and it has an amount needed column, which comes off the stored, and then it gives you a balance of your stored CPI. We will have, just if we go forward with this, we will still have 5.4 percent stored in CPI for county consolidated, 0.6 percent in library, 4.2 percent stored in secondary road, and 4.6 in rural fire, or county fire as we call it. So that's kind of, and there's also tabs on there, if you want to look at them, for what it would mean if we had, go to the Means of Finance, if you used growth only, the growth only one, yeah, right there. This Means of Finance is included, I've highlighted it, or colored in, of course, the different, what would change if you decided to only use your growth dollar and not part of your CPI. I've got just about every scenario in there for you. And of course, as you make any change in the budget, revenues or taxes, you know, different things change, that will also, if you go down to the bottom for me, Holly, shows you what the difference in the levies were.
Take a breath for just a second. We don't have all of this information in our book, do we?
You don't have the scenarios, no. You don't have the scenarios, they were in the information because the budget goal was frozen levies. But we can print that information out there, I made it all for you, but we didn't print it because we met the goals under the frozen levy.
But to meet the goals under the frozen levy, you're using some of the stored CPI?
Yes, you're using 0.5 percent of the stored CPI.
And how much does that amount to? Do I have that piece of paper?
The stored CPI?
Yeah.
No, I didn't get that until after this budget was sent to Holly to recalculate it. She didn't have it updated with last year's CPI, so I had to wait to see how she did that, and then I reformulated it. But once we hit the budget goals of the frozen levy, which was the goal, I added these because it gives you that additional information if you only want to use growth, if you only want to use a stored CPI, if you want to use all of them, if you want to use a part of it, it's all there for you. And it's pretty, just going through and explaining one, they're all highlighted with a different color, so you can see what was changed. And of course, the thing that changes is the amount of tax revenue that you're going to produce, and in all the funds, and of course, that will produce different levies.
Do we have a listing of what is in these, on these reserves? Do we have that in our book somewhere?
Yes, if you look at the Cash Analysis, there isn't technically a summary. The ones up above there, those are your special reserves, and then the reduction, other than the, those are the additional reserves that you've taken out, as well as the one that you've added in accumulated building.
So if I come down to cash balance, 123114, that would tell me what's left in each one of these funds?
Yes.
You could change.
Not, not that one, not that one, that one, on line 39.
39?
Yes.
All right.
Because that's taken out whatever actions you've made to date, as well as the assumptions that we make for the budget year. See that on line 39? Now, the reason this is different from the original one that I gave you quite some time ago, when we originally got estimated values, is I had made that assumption that you were going to take 1.8 million out for law enforcement, improvements that needed to be done, and after meeting with the Building Committee, I included that in accumulated building and levied for it.
Did we change the levy for accumulated building?
It changed the levy for accumulated building, but county general took up the difference. So we still are county consolidated, up a little bit, still county consolidated at just 0.001 more, just for the estimates. And the way we make the motions when we approve the annual budget is, if you wanted frozen levies, the motion includes, and to take any additional amount out of cash reserves that we need, and that amount would not be significant enough. But you can see where we lowered county general, and we also lowered county general to absorb emergency disaster. Now, if you go up to the top again, if you notice county fair, I froze that levy, but the board does need to make the decision if they want to take the additional $10,000 out of cash reserves to make that a frozen levy, or if you want to eat that up in a further reduction at county general, which frankly, it's minimal to county general. I just didn't know which way the board wanted to go on that. And this, they have the cash to support it, but we've usually not done that in the past. We've taken out of reserves, because they, there's such a small levy that they really need those reserves to do those expenses the first quarter of the year. But that just puts it out there, how much over that, but again, county general could easily absorb that. It's minimal when you're levying 29 million, so. That's, and if you want those additional Means of Finances printed out, as well as the stored CPI version, and I've just printed out what from 2012 forward, because those are the only stored, that's where our storing starts. You can store for three years, use plus current year. But in that report, there is the whole history of how much we've used, as well as all the other governments are in there, if you want to look at them, that can store, which is only cities, fire, and fire districts.
So when I look at line 39 on Cash Analysis, I'm seeing that emergency management has matter in the negative sense.
Well, that's because the way they budget and spend Homeland Security money, they budget for what balances they think they're going to have, and Dustin knows he can't overspend that. And this report is before you put in the federal, you know, the FEMA money that we got reimbursed. But it's not unusual to have that negative balance, since we're running Homeland Security through that. But Dustin knows very well, he can't run it into the hole. And it also shows the assumptions which are following through for 2015 to get that. And since I now have a 2015 budget, those percentages, which is what by law, the maximum of 40 percent is applied towards the next year's budget, we just don't have it most of the years. But we did, so I updated those, so you will see a change also. It pulls over what our provisional budget and revenues are. There's also a detailed new revenues in there. And then clear at the end are some of the old files, and I don't do a chart update until the end of the year and after the budget hearings. Now, what we project is that you'll go through your budget hearings, we'll make those changes, and then we'll update all of the information and bring it back to the board. We can either bring it back to the July 1st, so you can think about it, and then make final approval on the 15th, or if you want to have it approved on July, was it July 1st? The first meeting anyway, in July, if you want to approve it that way, we just need to know, so we can finalize the numbers. So it's a lot of information, as always, to go through, and we can print that information out for you on those other scenarios. Holly can forward you that in an email, so you can look at it and make any changes you want, to say, oh, if we do this, what it will do, if we do this, what it will do.
Any other questions? I do have a question, it's somewhat in the line of trivia maybe, but in terms of TIFs that expire, I understand quite a few of them have expired this year, and the added value that the county would recover from that, is that counted as growth, or how is that identified?
Yes, it is considered as growth, the first year, first taxing year comes off. They usually come off in the middle of the year, sometime during the, we'll have those that come off in 2013, from November 1st, 2013, till we close books in August or September, for any that close off. Pennington County has paid off their second TIF, we only have one outstanding. We don't know if we'll ever get that one paid off, or if it will just, there just doesn't seem to be any of the forward motion in growth in that one. So it is considered in your, go back to the Means of Finance, frozen levy, nope, the new Cash Analysis, and go down farther to the value information. That growth figure includes any TIFs that have dissolved for the period of time prior to when we estimated the values, which was in February. And I know we've had a couple go off since then in the city, both the county one and the city. I know you're waiting on that TID report, TIF report from me, and I'm waiting on some information from Rapid City.
Would it be the value, if not at least interest, if that could be tracked separately?
The growth?
The TIF, the returns on TIFs, so that we would know what percent or part of the growth was actually represented by TIFs expiring.
I'd have to get with Shannon, the Director, he knows all the values, and I'm sure we could do something to pull those out, but I don't know what they are. I can tell you what the net change from year to year is, but we don't run that report in at this point in time. That's a levy report that we have to print, and I could tell you at that time, but I can't pull it in and tell you now, but I can work with.
I didn't expect you to tell me now, but it gives the interest on part of the board.
I think part of that will show, when I get that TID report, I haven't forgotten, I got the information from Hill City, while, all the outline cities, but I'm waiting on some clarifications from the city, it was not on top of their priority list.
Thank you.
Commissioner Davis, this is the number that you were, that we were talking about earlier today, this reappraisal value, 0.36 of total assessment value.
Julie, you mentioned that we'd probably never get one of the county TIFs paid off, but can you explain that a little bit?
Well, when they started out, it was a very, much smaller TIF than normally we see. And then the company, or the developer that was, came in for it, was approved, is actually guaranteeing any of the construction loans, lost one of its major supporter partners due to a debt, it's had trouble reorganizing, and there's just nothing being done in it. The county taxpayers will not get stuck with that debt, simply because when we write our TID agreements, the developer guarantees the payment on the debt, and at that point in time, it will go away, and the developing, the developer company will be stuck with the debt. So we do have that assurance, but, you know, they can last a long time, like 20 years or something like that. The other two of our TIFs paid off, our first TIF paid off very, very quickly, and our second TIF paid off quicker than we had originally estimated also, but not by very many years.
So where is this one then, that's kind of in the?
In the limbo.
Yeah.
I'd have to look at the agreement to see how many years we agreed for it to go, and then there's always the extension possibility, but I'll look at that information and have it on the TID report. I'm hoping to get that finalized yet this month for you. I think that'll tell you a lot more information on the TIFs than we normally have.
Anything else? Not opposed to the time that Congresswoman Noem will arrive and?
She's here.
I'm going to ask Congresswoman Noem to occupy the seat next to Commissioner Holloway, so she can address the audience facing you instead of standing at the podium. If she does.
Thank you, thank you so much for having me. Good to see you, proud of you this morning. You know, I just wanted to visit and give you an update on a few things. I know you had some questions as far as federal jurisdiction and some of the proposals that are coming out, specifically the EPA. So I'll answer some questions as they come forward on those, if I don't quite cover them in my opening remarks, but one of the things that we've heard a lot about from people back here in South Dakota the last couple of months is a proposal that's recently come out from the EPA that has to do with jurisdiction over waters. We have, typically the EPA under the Clean Water Act has always had some jurisdiction over navigable waters, and they are defined as the large bodies of water that typically you would see large ships, larges using to transport goods. What the EPA is doing now is changing the description of navigable waters, and what that is doing is looking at many more bodies and many more entities of water to where that could potentially be defined as a pothole, a ditch, a stream, and what they are using as justification for this kind of a change is if the water eventually will end up into a navigable water, then they believe they have jurisdiction over that. In fact, we even believe that the way the EPA is interpreting that definition in these waters, it could even mean that if your driveway was flooded, that potentially now the EPA has some authority somehow over that area and that water that sits there. So we have been extremely alarmed by this proposal coming out of the EPA. We've heard from a lot of people across the country, a lot of people in South Dakota, farmers, ranchers, but even individuals have just recognized that this is a huge expansion of jurisdiction in the federal government, that we have taken some actions in Congress, but yet we still need to do much more. I have signed on to a letter to the Army Corps of Engineers telling them that I am unhappy with this proposed rule as it came forward. I've also written a letter to the EPA telling them that this is not a rule that they should pursue. Typically, when we get into these kinds of situations, the best way to stop them from moving forward is to weigh in during the public comment period, have a lot of people and folks back home weigh in as well, file a comment. I understand that you may be considering filing some kind of a comment as county commissioners here in Pennington County, and that would be a good thing to do if you have concerns about the proposal. We've certainly heard from a lot of folks on that. So we, they may withdraw the rule, we've been successful with that in the past. Recently, I don't know if a lot of folks have heard about, OSHA came out with a regulation and a proposed rule that they would have new jurisdictions over family farms that employed less than 10 people. OSHA has never had jurisdiction over these farms, it was never intended in federal statute that they would, but they just decided that they would want to loop them in, and we got very aggressive with them, aggressive during the comment period, sent letters telling them to back off, and they did. So we do have some success if people weigh in on these rules, pushing back and getting them stopped, but this one would be a huge issue in the state of South Dakota if it were to go forward, and it would be probably the largest federal jurisdiction expansion that we've seen in a very, very long time. Pennington County is a very large county, in fact, it's bigger than a lot of congressional districts, and people represent individuals in the House. I thank you for your leadership and the complex issues that you deal with consistently as commissioners, and this is one of them that will touch the vast majority of people that live in Pennington County if it does go forward. So that is something that is the one way we can stop, but the other way we can stop the EPA from pursuing this kind of a rule is by passing a law that stops them. Obviously, in order to do that, you have to pass a bill through the House, pass a bill through the Senate, and get the President to sign it to make it go into law to stop them. I would say that's been fairly difficult to do recently, and especially since the proposed rules come out of the administration, that the President has the authority over. Typically, he's not in favor of us stopping his executive branch from doing what they're trying to do. There is one bill I want to talk about though, that I think we need to build a lot of momentum for, and we passed it in the House the last two Congresses, it was called the RAINES Act, and it just said if a department or an agency like the EPA came out with a new rule or a new regulation, it, if it was economically significant, if it was going to have an impact on the economy of more than $100 million, that it had to come to Congress for approval first. For me, that's a much better way for this kind of major regulations to be dealt with, is if it was going to be this significant, that before it could go into place, it had to come to us, people who are elected, the people back home, before they could implement it. That would give us a check and balance to this overregulation that we're seeing coming out of Washington, D.C. Just a couple of other things I'll touch on. Pine beetles has been something that I have been passionate about since I've been elected to represent South Dakota, and we did in this last farm bill get some provisions put in place that are going to allow us to cut through a lot of the environmental permitting processes that we've never had before. We did a lot of work on trying to get some agreement with the Senate, on getting this language included in the farm bill, and I think it's probably one of the best farm bills that's ever been done as far as reforms and all the programs, but what we were able to do here in the Black Hills to give us the ability to get boots on the ground and work together and have good neighbor authority and categorical exclusions, we never would have been possible probably a year or so ago. So we have almost a million acres now in the Black Hills that are going to have new provisions on them that will allow us to streamline permitting processes where we will be able to find them, maybe for the first time, get in front of these beetles like we never have before. Before, what always stopped us was getting on federal land and running into a, by the time we get a permit filed, we have to file another one, and it sold us down. We will not have to deal with that kind of bureaucracy because of the provisions we have in the farm bill, and that's a great thing for us in the Black Hills. The last thing is pilt funding, because you deal so much with property taxes and costs of running local governments, schools. Pilt funding is a payment in lieu of taxes, and many counties, and Pennington is one of the big ones, that have a lot of federal land or a lot of federal property in their county, aren't able to collect taxes off of that land. So if you have maybe a reservation property in your county, if you have an air force base like Ellsworth, if you have some of those things that just aren't taxable, that's an income loss for the county, and the federal government has always recognized that in the past, that that is something that they're impacting local budgets and have made a payment in lieu of those taxes. Problem is, is that that tends to expire every year. We have to reauthorize it. It has been something that at times has not been included and has been zeroed out in the President's budget since I've been there, it has been that way. For the first three years I was there, where he zeroed it out and did not fund it, we had to go back and fight to get it included. We reauthorized it for 2012 in the farm bill as well, so that that payment in lieu of taxes would go forward and come out to the local governments and to the school districts, and then also now in our appropriations process, we will be reauthorizing it for 2015. 2015 budget of the President's did have it back in there, so we're very glad to see that, that he made it a priority, and that should make it even easier for us to get it through the Senate this time and not have the battles we've had in the past. With that, I'll let you ask me any questions that you may have.
First, I'll ask you, how much time do you have?
Oh, I, when Beth starts hollering, we know, I'm just kidding. Probably, I probably have 10, 15 minutes. You're saying five, but I'm going to say 10. Okay.
When they nervously head for the door.
Yeah, and so, we are going down to Custer to the, there's a Gold Star Families luncheon down there, and the BFW State Convention, so we do want to make sure we get there.
One question I've had over time is, is the issue of what I'll call green organizations suing federal agencies to stop certain things that they don't approve of, and they sue over procedural processes and all that sort of thing, and if they win, they get their expenses paid, their lawyer fees and all that. And I've known of a few cases where private citizens, private property was jumped on by EPA for some reason, and lawsuit followed, and the citizen won in some cases, and as a result, I have to question, does that citizen get paid the same as a green organization in terms of expenses?
Well, there are federal dollars that get used under the Equal Access to Justice Act, that get used by a lot of environmental organizations to file these lawsuits and to get their legal expenses covered. So the citizens many times do not qualify for that unless they do apply for that kind of coverage. What we've seen is a real abuse of that program over the years, that those dollars under that program were originally intended to be used by people who had lack of resources that needed some justice and, but maybe couldn't afford to hire a lawyer or attorney to represent them. But lately, we've been seeing organizations that do have multimillion dollar budgets using those kind of dollars to pursue these kind of endeavors, and so that is a reform that we're looking at in the House to see how we can fix that program to make sure that it's not used to promote an agenda like it has been the last many years. Those dollars are being used to promote something that isn't the intention of that original program, and we believe that we have to bring some integrity back into it, or else no longer fund that program, which I think would be a disservice to the people who truly didn't need it and use it to feel as though they had no representation. You know, I, it's been frustrating watching, especially out here in the hills where you have so much federal land and you have, you had the battles that we've had ongoing in the hills, to see that you're fighting a lot of environmental groups that aren't even in the state, you know, there are a lot of states across the country, and sometimes the local folks don't feel like their voice gets heard either, and then you see that they don't end up picking up their bill at the end of the battle either.
Do you need any commissioners, questions?
The only question I'd have, Mr. Chair, is anything that we can do along with conjunction with you to help this continue, other than write a letter that the county commission thinks that beyond that, would be anything that we can?
With the EPA, navigable rules, navigable waters rule, yes, definitely if you, for us, what helps is to make those public comments. The public comment period is going to be open until July 21st, so we have some time, but also, they gauge everything in numbers. I'm always surprised by D.C. at the amount of people that sit up and start paying attention when they start seeing high numbers of people responding to things. So I would not only, as a commission, go forward and make your own comments as a group, but also as many people as you can encourage to do that individually as well, because they count the numbers and the amount of comments that come in by how much protest there is against a rule, and that really makes a whole difference. And as we go forward, if we have to pursue legislation, we certainly will, we're drafting that now, we ask for your support on that, and I don't think we'll have any problem in the state of South Dakota getting people to support that piece of legislation, but we would have to put a lot of pressure on the Senate to bring that bill up. That's not a bill that they typically would vote on, much less pass, so, but we have passed many bills. When I first was elected, we worked on the EPA was coming out with new dust regulations. I don't know if you remember us dealing with that, but that was a huge issue to where they were coming to new dust restrictive levels that even if somebody was potentially bailing on a dry windy day, that they could violate those standards that the EPA was looking to move to, and we were successful in stopping them to do that. But we did have to pass a bill through the House before the EPA finally backed off on going to those new standards, so, you know, we certainly understand that there are concerns, but a lot of the realities that we live with have to be talked about, rather than just allowing bureaucrats at D.C. to pick a number or to pick a definition and think that it's going to work for the entire country. I can't imagine a world where the EPA thinks they can come in and have jurisdiction over the stock dam behind my house, or the puddle in my front yard, or, you know, the ditch that runs through our fields. It's just unbelievable, and people talk about all of that, but what they need to realize is to do anything, then you're going to need a permit, and it's going to cost you money, and it's going to cost you time, and even if that water's only there temporarily after a big rainstorm, it could potentially be under that jurisdiction, and I think that's really what is scaring a lot of people.
I might point out that we have Sue Cook here, who is the chair of the Pennington Constellation District, and so you might encourage her to mobilize some input as well.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I don't know if it's possible or not, but maybe we can mobilize the 630 employees of Pennington County. Would you write individual letters?
Anything else, Mr. Chair?
No, if you have questions for me, I'll sure answer them, but other than that, I don't want to put you to sleep so early in the morning.
It's certainly honored to.
Sorry, I just want to know, what was the time period of your comments?
Comments end at July 21st. Now, sometimes, these departments, organizations will extend the comment period if it becomes very controversial. They start getting a lot of feedback and a lot of comments coming in, they will extend those for another 30 to 60 days, and we typically have to make that request as members of Congress to get them to do that, but we will do that. If people, if you are visiting with a lot of folks and they want to keep commenting, or they feel like they have time to do that, we can certainly put that request in, but July 21st as of right now is the deadline. You know, we actually have a handout here today that we'll leave with you that says how you can make a comment, if you all want to use that, and give it to people that you know, if they can weigh in and make a formal comment. We thought that'd be easier than making everybody remember what's said.
Is this me?
Is that what he's doing? I don't ever look at him. No, that's, yeah, it probably does.
Call this one.
He said, okay, we'll blame Brad today, we'll do that. He's got big shoulders. Well, thank you for having me, I appreciate it. Thank you for all the good work you've done for the country. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, we're ready to go back to the office.
Yes.
Item 13.
13A is a new retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine for Hart Ranch Camping and Resort Club and Valiant Winery tasting room. Information is attached, business names, property owners, fee information, and applications are attached.
Any questions from the way?
Do you have any problems they can file in one motion?
These two, you can make in one motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the malt beverage license for the Hart Ranch Camping Resort and retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license for the Valiant Vineyard Incorporated, and I see that Hart Ranch also had a wine license.
We have a motion in a second, any questions or comments? Hearing them, those in favor of the motion say aye. Most motion here.
Next is the annual malt beverage license renewals. They've all been properly advertised, they've all paid their publication fee, the list is quite lengthy, the applications are attached.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve those license applications.
We have a second. We have a motion in a second, any discussion on this side? Not those in favor of the motion, say aye. Most motion here. Item C.
This is a bonding and release purchase agreement authority, and standard and core are the rating agency that we have used over the last several bond issues, and if I would call the board's attention that under the current dispatch center user award agreement that's been approved by the county and the city, I understand there is one, that that agreement is being readdressed, and the standards and core letter basically says that we did not report that debt to them in a timely manner, and that was
Like I said, that tells all the contracts that the county has to be best by the making them, do we change that somewhere along the line?
Yes. The user board for the Dispatch Center gave them full authority to go into any amount of debt that they, that they approved, which is what they did on part of the, um, tower and equipment project. They say the board was informed that they were going to do it, I, but we never had the motion, and it's in the current agreement. They can go into any amount of debt that they want. And what I'm asking is, is because we have to, it, it's a big deal to, the financial reports of the county, if we don't have appropriate debt on there, we didn't know about it, that they had entered into this separate one, we don't track that kind of information, and that Department of Legislative Audit basically said that that type of approval should come to the board. Standards, Standards and Poor says, because these bond issues go out into the, into the world of information, and we had not properly informed them of it in a timely manner, and by the time we found out about it, it wasn't considered timely. So, we're just asking, they're in the process of redoing that user board, um, agreement, and we just want every board out there to review those agreements, if, if that's what the commissioners want to do, and, I, I mean, the board, the boards knew about it, there wouldn't have been any problem approving it, but anytime they go into debt like that, they have missed the, the 20-day after publication to be able to refer that issue. Um, so, we just think it's smart, it, it wouldn't have hurt their process at all, or anybody's process in the future. So that's what we're recommending.
Jay, is this something that you need a little time to analyze, to see what the proper motion would be, so that it comes on the basis that need to be covered?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah?
I would think that that ought to come out of that contract with the 901 board, they can no longer do that, and they're committing the taxpayer to any amount of money they want to commit them to, and that should be wrong.
I have a question for Julie. Do you know if the user board is currently being to address a draft of this agreement?
When Department of Legislative Audit met with the county commissioners, I believe Sheriff Tom told them that they, that that agreement was being rewritten, but there was no specific motion made from the board or indication that they should remove that part of it.
I think if it's the board's desire, then that type of provision, they are meant to remove that authority that the board has, you could do a motion to direct that happening. That way, the board, in looking at the agreement, would know that they have that kind of marching order in front of them.
Would there possibly be any other boards that would have a similar situation?
Off the top of my head, that's the only one I'm aware of at the time.
I'll make a motion to withdraw any power that this commission has granted to any group or anyone doing business under the county's financial responsibility, and that any agreement that contains such language be ordered to be rewritten immediately and presented to this board for the full.
Close to the second.
I did, I, off the top of my head.
Are you open to that motion yet?
I don't think that comes.
Okay. Any further comments or discussion?
Well, we, we need to do that, we can't, it would affect your bond rate.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Not those in favor of the motion, say aye. Most, motion carried. Right in deed.
This is the refinance of the 2008 bond issue that we have outstanding. As always, our bond underwriter, Tom Grumman, and bond counsel, Betsy Abbey, are continually monitoring, monitoring our bonds for the betterment of the county. It is their recommendation that we refinance our existing 2008 bond issue. This specific issue was used for additional jail completion costs. Um, I've included part of the documents for you to review, but I will recap them. The refinancing will save the county $133,005.01 at the current rate, and this includes all costs added in with, with new issue. It always costs us to, to rewrite a set of bonds. Our net coupon rate was reduced from 4.3587259 to 1.7966287. Now, why they carry it out that far, I have no idea. We price this issue using a, a AA3 rating. We are hoping that we can maintain that rating. Ratings have been going down, and we are hoping that the Dispatch will not bring that down to a AA2 rating, which of course reflects into the average coupon rate that we'll be paying. We will be monitoring that. We will come back if the rating, as we go through and rate it, comes back lower, and it affects the rate, what amount of savings we will have, and if it will still be feasible for us to refund those bonds. Um, the new bonds will also mature in 2023, and this will be a blended issue of callable and non-callable bonds. What that means is there's three years of bonds that we cannot call in and include in the reissue amount, so we will be putting that money into an escrow account so that it can be paid for, and we therefore still get the net coupon rate reduction. The resolution, of course, I've included the debt comparison rate, and the resolution that's been drafted by Betsy Abbey is the same as all of the other resolutions. This is, will be published, and because we want to capture that low interest rate before it fluctuates back up, um, we need, we proceeded with possible approval today. And when we publish it, then the people have 20 days to refer it to a vote, and then we can't proceed. But with the savings, I, we don't think that that's going to be an issue at all.
Please a motion to authorize your, and approve the resolution relating to lease purchase of county buildings, authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease purchase agreement and approving and authorizing execution of related documents, and authorizing certificates of participation. And the chair, Mr. Commissioner.
Second. Most to the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye. Most, motion carried. Next item, right in deed.
This is the canvas of the primary election results. I have them in front of you, well, in front of me, and I will proceed to them. We need to get these mailed out to PIER, so I will pass the certificate along of approval. And basically what it says is, we, listing the county commissioners, that you are the board of canvassers in Pennington County for the primary election held on June 3rd, 2014. Hereby certified that the foregoing is a true abstract of the votes cast in the jurisdiction of Pennington County at the election, as shown by their returns certified to the person in charge of the election, which they are, they are attached. They're, um, they're in the format that we need to send to PIER. Actually, PIER's already got them. We sent them through the election night, through the statewide total vote system, but they do need a paper copy. We have no issues with the, um, the scanners, no issues with balancing to the certificates of ballot statement, and it all went off well.
So, do you need a motion from us?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to approve the candidacy of ballots for the last election on June 3rd.
And signature to the?
Side signature here, too.
Thank you.
Right in the second. Motion in second. Any further discussion?
We only have the possibility of one count, recount, that's in Legislative District 33, which laps over in the mean county. The candidate, um, the candidate has to be within 2% of the total vote count. It's the only race that we have that is within that 2%, and we are in the process of proceeding with that if that paper is filed. And Mr. Johnson has until June 13th at 5:00 p.m. It's based off of three days after the state canvass, which is Tuesday, the 10th. And we will bear the cost of that, but it's relatively small. It's paying the three board members and any additional expenses that they would need. Shouldn't be anything.
Should we sign this in the order that you have to present it?
No.
So we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to approve the candidacy of ballots for the last election on June 3rd.
And signature to the?
Side signature here, too.
Thank you.
Right in the second. Motion in second. Any further discussion?
We only have the possibility of one count, recount, that's in Legislative District 33, which laps over in the mean county. The candidate, um, the candidate has to be within 2% of the total vote count. It's the only race that we have that is within that 2%, and we are in the process of proceeding with that if that paper is filed. And Mr. Johnson has until June 13th at 5:00 p.m. It's based off of three days after the state canvass, which is Tuesday, the 10th. And we will bear the cost of that, but it's relatively small. It's paying the three board members and any additional expenses that they would need. Shouldn't be anything.
Should we sign this in the order that you have to present it?
No.
So we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye. Most, motion carried.
Do you need a motion to pay election expenses?
Yes. I'm sorry, that wasn't on my note. We need a, we need approval to pay all related expenses, election expense, expenses, which is basically the precinct boards and rental checks.
Okay, motion. We have a second. Motion in second. Any questions or comments? Not those in favor of the motion, say aye. Most, motion carried.
And that's it for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Julie, did we have to calculate those expenses? Were you just?
I had an email from Cindy Lake. I will, I will get the expenses.
Okay, Mike is not here. Oh, I'm sorry, I just couldn't see you back there, Mike. Good morning. Mike Coore, Pennington County, Williams and Graves, construction project manager.
The county has been working on procuring the fixtures, furnishings, and equipment for the new administration building. One of those items that's included in that is audiovisual systems for, for the building. The county has worked for over a year with ABI Systems. They were selected because of their expertise in design and installation of this type of systems. This has been a very long process involving numerous meetings with departments assessing needs and lots, uh, review meetings and building committee meetings to discuss these items. I'd like to thank all the departments that have worked with us to assess the needs of the building on earth, and I'd like to especially thank Russ and IT, Holly and the commission office, Dustin and emergency management, and Ted, Dispatch, and RJ and the state attorney's office. They all spent a, a lot of additional time and effort trying to determine what the county needed in terms of audiovisual systems. ABI has met with every department to assess the need, their needs, and then propose solutions. We then went back and refined these proposed costs, minimized costs where we could, and then this revised proposal that we got from ABI was reviewed with the building committee, and we got their input in terms of what they thought should be funded for construction funds. And the proposal was revised once again, and that is what I have left here today. So, I am seeking the board's authorization to, chair signature, enter a contract with ABI Systems for, the AV Systems for the new building, an amount of $400,236.
Is part of this?
It is.
Does he have a motion?
Mike, is, is part of this, is all of this being paid from the cumulative billing, or is there, is there some of being paid separately?
And I guess I did bring in that, an updated sheet that I can provide to the commissioners. It is primarily coming from project funds, but both Dispatch and emergency management have budgeted a significant amount to this. So approximately $200,000 of it is being paid for by budgeted money from emergency management and Dispatch.
So, you have a question, Dr.? The $400,000 that we're seeing here is, is the total projects? That's the total?
That's the overall contract value.
Okay, all right. So about 200, well, over 200,000 would be coming from the building?
Building. Thank you. The, the list that I provided you is similar to the one I had provided earlier, just updated with some new information. As noted above, the furniture, we already have a contract signed for that, one signed for the phone system. Have authorized purchase of IT equipment for the building, and now we're looking at the audiovisual component of the building. And following, following up in, in the future yet, we're bringing up a proposal for high-density storage. The building committee has asked that, wants to wait and see the need for window coverings in the building before we try and move ahead with anything in terms of purchases for that, so that's something that's on hold. And then we'll also have some money that will be spent on interior and exterior building signage.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the contract of audiovisual solutions, I guess it's.
ABI.
AV Systems. In the amount of $400,236.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye. Most, motion carried. Thank you. Next item is Title 15A.
Good morning, Danny Gordon, county fire administrator. South Dakota law requires any organization anticipating to have a public display of fireworks, it must have permission from the deputy body. And once again, Black Hill Speedway is anticipating to have a public display of fireworks on July 4th. a public display of fireworks on July 4th with two rainout dates of Saturday, July 5th, or Friday, July 11th. So that requires a simple motion from the board of commissioners. We do have a process in a way that they have to provide us with the appropriate information and the liability insurance type information. Phil Kuester from the Black Hill Speedway is here presenting questions for it. This will be what is generally known as a consumer fireworks display. Then anybody can go out and buy at any fireworks retail stand. It's not large, six and eight, twelve inch shells, such as they use at the City of Rapid or Elks Club. These are all consumer grade fireworks.
Mr. Chair. Danny, everything has been taken care of to your satisfaction?
Uh, we'll work on that. They actually have ordered to require a copy of the invoice, so we know the exact size and, excuse me, the certificate of insurance from the, from their carrier and stuff. But they don't get a permit to do it until we have all that information.
Any other questions? Do you have any comments, sir?
No, no, sir. It's just what we've done for the last five years. I want to approve the public display of fireworks for Black Hill Speedway on Friday, July 4th, 2014, with rainout date of July 5th or July 11th, provided that they meet all the requirements.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Item 16, Highway Department. This is your best decision.
Mount Wilson, County Highway. First item is award recommendation for bridge repairs. We have a letting, uh, May 27th for bridge repairs for structures number 15, 314, 432 structures, 52, 341, 445. There were two bids received. One was from Ford Construction Services of Hermosa, South Dakota. The amount is $66,735. And JB Bailey, the amount is $65,466. We recommend following motion to award bridge repairs for those two structures to the low bidder, JB Bailey Company, in the amount of $65,466.
Mr. Chair. Yes. Did he leave that much money in the ledger for you?
I'm sure he did. It's all part of the 2014 budget.
That would be my motion to approve the contract with JB Bailey in the amount of $65,466.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Item B is for another project we have left, uh, same day. Bridge repairs for structure number 52, 206, 308. Two bids from the same, one from Ford Construction Hermosa, amount of $62,497, and JB Bailey, amount of $49,816. Uh, we recommend following motion. Motion is to award the bridge repairs to the low bidder, JB Bailey Company, in the amount of $49,816.
What's my motion?
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Item C is 2015-19 transportation improvement plan. If we're at a city area of metropolitan planning, organization, the MTO, and we request we to submit an updated transportation improvement plan. They require us to approve for their, for their, um, the finally revised 2015-19 transportation improvement plan, showing the estimated cost of the project and proposed funding candidates. On this tip, I have to admit, I found an error. Type of improvement on the first one, was copied from another one, that is a repeat, P, greeting and saying for project of Amimo Road and Norris Peak Road. And the description is what is wrong. The numbers for the cost for that project are, and extensions are correct. I will have to give you a revised copy of that type of project. I also cast with this a map showing you, maps showing you where the projects are for your convenience. All the projects are in green. The structure, uh, the project names and structure numbers for your convenience. Our motion, we require, request, following motion, the motion to approve the 2015-19 transportation improvement plan, with the correction of that description.
So in terms of a time period, 2015 to 2019, does this type of plan ratchet up over certain increments of time? Like, did one expire in 2014, or will it expire, and then we end up in another five-year plan, or how does that work?
Uh, each year it has to be approved.
So the next one will be 2016 to 2020?
Exactly. Each year moves up one more year.
And in terms, just to talk, um...
As you can see on this list, like, it goes all the way up to 2023. All that Rapid City wants is, the way I understand it, is up to 2019. I'm just showing you all of our projects. Using state monies, state federal monies.
Let's just say that for some reason, the three identified projects for 2015, one of them didn't get done. Would that just be moved up to 2016, and the next time around?
I think it's kind of tied to the 15. Norris Peak and those two structures are already... We're already working on a little bit for the engineer.
Any other questions?
Oh, I have, oh, this is sort of a dream list, I take it, that hopefully we keep getting federal priority or safety funds to turn up millions of dollars. May or may not from the past. This is what we'd like, what you'd like to see now.
This is what we're, we have some of these already on schedule that have been approved. In fact, I compare these to what the state has on 2019. They are on this, I have to adjust. I think one of them might have to adjust a year because we're having problems with environment assistance.
Which, which ones have already been approved then?
Down to 20, uh, 2018 or 19, I'm not sure.
Okay, so the Sheraton Lake Road project has already been approved?
Through the state, yes.
Through the state?
That is the one that we're having problems with environment assistance. In fact, it was actually for 15. It's now going to move back to, not 15, yeah, move back to 16.
The STP funds are state, those are state funds?
Those are state funds, yes. They are state matching ones.
And then the South Rochford Road one has also been approved?
Yes, that was funded through ICD funds years ago. It's just been a slow process. We're doing, uh, an EIS on that environment impact statement. It's taking, so it's taking a while to get it done. We'll be bringing it up to you shortly, so.
So the nine, okay, see under the unorganized, uh, the road and bridge unorganized are on unobligated reserves. You're using nine, nine and a half million dollars. That's what you've been carrying those reserves for?
Do you get pardon? Nine and a half, or road and bridge are unorganized?
Well, in the, in the reserves, it says...
We have, current in our reserve, we have ten, ten and a half million in our reserves on these different funds, and that's what's funding most of our unorganized.
And, and is that where the money for the new shop is coming out of, out of those reserves?
So that's part of the, yeah, part of this shop is also.
So we won't be accumulating anymore in reserve? We're spending everything we've got?
This, like I said, this goes out to 23. There won't be other funds that come available to it.
So how much do you add to that reserves every year, do you know?
Pardon?
How much it gets added to those reserves every year?
I am, I don't know.
Before you come into your budget here, you might try to figure that out.
Yes, I'm going through it a lot now.
Yeah, it would be something I'd be interested in when I had my budgets.
I'll get back to it.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion? I make a motion to approve the transportation plan after agenda about highway supervision. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Item B.
Item B. This is a modification to our cooperative road agreement. This allows us to get funding from the federal government to do work on forest service. This is with our forest service block agreement, and about 16 numbers there that we can read down. Yanded into in April. This modification is to remove three cattle guards. Two of them on Norris Peak Road, one on Bogus Georoe, near our, we have had meetings with the forest services, and they approved, and given us the, that's what shows the funding that they are going towards.
Remove cattle guards?
To remove these cattle guards, yes. Some of the cattle guards can be sold, which we will take and have to the forests. But these are razing areas that are no longer dangerous to forest service, brought to us that we can remove.
So forest service is not leasing that grazing areas to, right?
That's the way I understand it. That's, that's, the area is not being used, and one of the areas has been fenced off. Um, yes, we've worked with the forest service. Some of these grazing allotments have been fenced by the VCs to keep the cattle off the road. So we noticed there were cattle on Norris Peak or Bogus Georoe these last several years. So talked to the forest service, asked them if they were still needed. A couple of them needed repairs. And, and they researched into it and found that they were no longer needed. So it's Pennington County's, Pennington County best benefit to remove those obstructions around the roadway liability wise, and forest service will pay us transportation costs. Under Pennington County livestock guard policy, we will remove any livestock guard free of charge, just to get rid of the liability and obstruction. But under a forest service agreement, they have agreed to pay us transportation costs to take those to the hill city shop. They consider themselves the owners of the structure.
I didn't claim that. I wondered how we, how we build cattle back for the country of the road.
No, that's all been research. We don't want that.
Make a motion to approve modification of the three that was really written. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Tommy is scoring a thousand percent of the name.
I will continue.
Item 17.
Good morning, next to you, HR Director of Pennington County. What we have in front of you today is two different things that recently went through our compensation committee, and as per our procedure, bringing them forward today. The first one came from the sheriff's office, and what we're asking is for the regrading of the correctional case manager from grade 18 to grade 14. Currently, we don't have anyone in this position. However, the grade 14 starting salary is more economical and competitive with the current labor market for like positions. I have the motion that we're looking for, and if there are any questions, I know Steph McCoy and the sheriff are here as well.
Are you looking for a motion on just item one?
Yes.
I just saw for one coming, Kevin Towe, county sheriff. On both these, we followed the process through the compensation committee. It's no FTE, no new FTEs. It's actually lowering the ones in entry level position from nine to seven, because just maybe the basic part four, up there, we have paid two lives. So it's a lower level pay for entry level position. And then the company, for the case manager, we looked at case managers' industry standards, so to speak. We were too high. So that's why we requested going from 18 to 14. I think it's beneficial to the company.
Make a motion to reposition the correctional case manager from grade 18 to grade 14 in Pennington County wage scale.
Do we have a second?
Seconded.
We have a motion in a second. Any further comments? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item two.
Thank you. Blake, the sheriff, just said, what we are attempting to do is add a clerical position at a grade seven. And with that, if this was successful, change some job titles. Like Kevin said, we're not looking to add any new FTEs. We're just looking to try to clean up our wage scale. And in doing so, we can kind of kill two birds with one's own, so to speak. But currently, our lowest level administrative position is a grade nine. And some of the duties that we're asking people do at the lowest levels, we think would be more appropriated at grade seven, which is still a very nice wage in Rapid City. So if that was successful, we would call that position a staff assistant one. The second piece to that is the other three lower level administrative positions on our wage scale don't really have a cohesive title to them. When talking with KJ before, when someone would come in to the previous commissions and ask to add a, an administrative position, whatever title they brought in was adopted. And so there's really no, I just use the term there's no rhyme or reason to the names on our scale. And that's one of the things that Steph and I and Jess are trying to do, is clean up some of this language that's been around for so long. So this is kind of a dual purpose motion that we're looking for. But basically, it would be to add a grade seven administrative position, call it staff assistant one, and then change the grades nine, 10, and 12 positions from their current titles to staff assistant two, three, and four. We're not anticipating any, nobody would get a raise, nobody would change job duties. All we could simply do is take a job description, cut out the old title, put in the new title. So there'd be, there's no monetary, there's nothing monetary in this motion, except for adding the grade seven. We don't currently have any sort of... Except for adding the grade seven, and we don't currently have any sort of...
Any questions? Yes, Mr. Sheriff. Uh, Nick, it says you're adding a clerical position at grade seven. Now, I presume what that means is you want to put a slot in there that's available, but there's nobody there to fill it yet?
Correct.
Now, what's the plan about filling it?
Uh, this was brought forth by the sheriff's office. I don't know if Steph or Kevin have wanted to address that, but I know they had some administrative needs that we need to fill at a lower level.
Ben, Mr. Sheriff, that's exactly right. We have some nines that are open, and I don't want to fill them in a nine, I'd rather fill them in a seven. So as, through attrition, as nines are vacant, and a seven's a more appropriate grade for that position, whether higher or lower level.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion? I make a motion to add the title of staff assistant one to the wage scale at a grade seven, and change the title of the grade nine, ten, and twelve administrative positions to staff assistant two, three, and four respectively. We have a motion and a second? Any further discussion?
In your twenty-fifteen budget, are you asking for another employee to fill this, this position?
No, again, this, this is through attrition. So the bottom line, further painless nine, one painless seven, and those positions.
Any other questions? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye. Those, those who carry it. Item eighteen.
Good morning. It's a parallel recent water irrigation ditch. And the more I think about this, the more, the more problems I can see coming up. And I think personally, I feel that I would like to have a meeting with the county commissioner of the city, maybe somebody to reach back to us, handle a lot of irrigation problems, get everything out on the table, and then go back and review the proposal to what we'd like to do. We want to cooperate, we want this thing set up for the future, so let's all take it there. Listening to Christie today, I think we could, we could have some problems there, too. So I think a committee of, of four or five members power here, uh, if we could sit down and maybe come up with a lot of the solutions. We'll get this thing as off.
Would it be your fault that the highway department would be representing? Would the highway department would be representing?
I think the highway department of the city, maybe one county commissioner. We have people from Respect that are really up on irrigation ditches. Uh, maybe one of the aldermen from the city, like the rentees in the area out there, to show everybody where the, firsthand where the problem is, and try to get everybody to input how we can correct this problem. We're, we want to cooperate and do something done once and for all. I know it's been kind of like the irrigators feel like, we got it, they act with you guys. We don't feel like, like, we're the ones that are saying. Because I, I don't think there's any way we can maintain that ditch without having a county involved, the city involved, to make it work.
See, Tom, Jay, do you have some input at this time?
Uh, actually, I thought that that would probably be the, the request is that, because we've talked about that, I think, a couple of commission meetings ago, about maybe there would be a two-way forum, ask force to look into it, so. No, I, I, at this point, I could probably do something like that to at least formalize some plan or proposal to bring forward, and then really discuss, see where it goes.
At the present time, I don't think the city or the county has a drainage plan for that whole area. If they do have a plan, I'd like to bring that in, so we can look at what they're doing.
Item D, do you have any input?
Brittany Malwider, Water Protection Coordinator. I do know that there's drainage plans for all of the tributary areas. Um, I don't know which one exactly. I think that goes through several, and I think it goes through the unnamed tributary area, the Restrick drainage, and I forget what the other one is. But there are some drainage plans. Um, yeah, they're individual, but they don't do the whole segment. There's, they, they kind of, the Hawthorne ditch goes through several of the drainage areas. Um, and most of those plans just deal with quantity issues and things like that. And today, with the, the comments from Christina Ohman, some of the issues could change that ditch and for water quality and quantity issues. So I think, you know, from our perspective, I think it's something that we need to look at for the future, and maybe take some of the information of the drainage plans that we already have, and pertain it to the ditch.
The, the plan is to take all the water, dump it in the ditch, and then it's your problem.
It's been, it's been, I want to thank you, Commissioner, for the help you did up this morning, because it was, it was really appreciated.
Mr. Sheriff?
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to include the chair appointing the committee to represent the county with the Hawthorne, Hawthorne ditch drainage, uh, which, which should include people from the county that don't even highway and county officials.
Second. We have a motion and a second? Any further comments or discussion?
I don't think, Mr. Sheriff, I don't think that the list they gave is necessarily inclusive. We might want some of the city, we might want some of their money to...
Well, I think that's our decision to point the road, but we got to... The least I think that should be made in the county highway and county officials.
See, other comments? Not those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those, those who carry it. Yeah? Well, we'll be in touch. Thank you. Next item is planning and zoning.
Good morning, Dan Jensen, Pennington County Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items sequentially. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion, and both of those items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda after a request by a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning includes the following items. Item A is a second reading of rezoning request fourteen oh two, incompetent plan amendment fourteen oh two for Chad Golding, approval recommended. Item B is a second reading of ordinance amendment fourteen oh two, Rich Jensen and Corey Rooney, and approval is recommended. Item C is first reading in public hearing of rezoning fourteen oh one, incompetent plan amendment fourteen oh one for William and Nancy Ewing, Davis Engineering as the agent, and approval is recommended. Item D is a minor plat fourteen oh eight for Neil Teshetter, fifth plan serving as the agent, and approval is recommended. Item E is a spring creek watershed management and project implementation plan, and amend with these specs contract, and approval is recommended.
Does anyone wish any of the items on the planning and zoning consent agenda were removed?
Yes, Sheriff. I'd like I didn't see you talking about that just a little bit.
Item C, do you want me to remove? Any others? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item C.
Second? Second? We have a second? Those in favor of the motion say aye. Those, motion carry. Item C.
Item C is the first reading in public hearing of rezoning fourteen oh one, incompetent plan fourteen oh one for William and Nancy Ewing, Davis Engineering. This is to rezone two point four nine acres from Lord Dempsey Residential District to Suburban Residential District, and to amend Pennington County County has applied to change future land use from Lord Dempsey Residential District to Suburban Residential District. Planning commission recommended approval of this, of both requests. Uh, this is located right across from Johnson Siding, uh, area. They are looking to subdivide the property into two lots. And, uh, do you have a very specific question, maybe you can answer very quickly?
Just, just one, and I, I just wonder about floodplain in this area.
They have done a floodplain development permit, and they are currently, and they have submitted it to FEMA to actually do a loan mark on this property, a letter of math amendment. So that is currently being reviewed. It has been reviewed. The floodplain development permit has been reviewed by our office and approved. They're currently also requesting we do some dirtwork, and that was recently approved also on this property. All of it is outside of the one hundred year floodplain.
But not out of the five hundred year?
That is correct. And we don't, we do not regulate the five hundred year.
Right, that's the only question I have.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion relative to item C?
Mr. Sheriff, make a motion for approval of the five hundred year floodplain.
Motion is a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye. Those, those who carry it. Item F. Oh, excuse me, they need to convene as a board of commissioners. Motion is a second? To convene as a board of commissioners. Those in favor say aye. Those, motion carry.
Item F is a variance request fourteen sixteen for William and Martina Pugh. This is to reduce the minimum required twenty-five foot front yard setback and rear yard setback from eight, uh, to eight feet in suburban residential district. If the variance is approved, staff will not recommend any conditions. It's located at forty-seven forty Carroll Street at the intersection of Platteau and Carroll Street. Currently is a point one four acre. They are trying to sell this property and would like to have the option of replacing the current single wide on the property with a larger home. Property that was created in nineteen seventy is considered illegal, non-conforming lot. The problem is, is that the front of the property, uh, really considered or really restricts the property from anything being placed on it, uh, once they remove the single wide, which is grandfathered on the property. Uh, it is only sixty feet wide. If they had to abide by both the front and rear yard setbacks, they could only place a ten-foot wide structure on the property. So with this request, it would allow them to bring in a larger structure on the property. Because one of the lots that was built a long time ago, or platted a long time ago, and became very restrictive if they had to meet our required setbacks. Really, the only option if they had to meet the required setbacks is that they could obtain additional properties from some surrounding properties, and they have attempted to do that, and at this time, the, uh, property owners around them have not agreed or don't want to sell them additional properties. So the other, only other option is either leave it as is, or obtain this variance to allow them to place more structure on the property.
What's your wish? Any questions or comments?
My name is David Heinrich. I own the property that is up to the top of Reda, and that would be approaching, uh, I think it's unfair, it will directly affect property on their lot, my section. The Lord neighborhood is generally an objection to it. And I remember writing that a number of people that signed this and give this to you, their name and address, I don't remember who's here. I don't want to say Preston, that need to provide neighborhood, the research was not thoroughly, the information I received.
Where is your property at, sir?
If you go right above Frank Bear, that's my property.
This, this variance request would still allow it to go back to that area for that? They have currently an eight-foot setback that they could place here, and an eight-foot setback here. They're asking to reduce this setback and this setback to eight feet. Right now, it has to be twenty-five feet to low here, and twenty-five feet to low here. So this would reduce this setback and this setback. This would still be eight feet.
So the garage that's standing there right in front of that, right at the lower bottom, or down the bottom, i- is that part of the same property?
No, that is an adjacent property.
Okay, how did, how does people get access to this subject property?
There is an easement in place right here. Carroll Street is about right here, and there's a, uh, easement filed with registered deeds providing access right here. And so that's, their, their access comes in here, and that's why this is the front yard setback, and this is the rear yard setback. If it was the other way around, this, if the access came in right here, this would be the front, and this would be the rear. And then they could have an eight-foot setback here and here.
Okay, and the people that live on either side, uh, looking at that picture, the right and left side, have, have they signed the objection?
The one on the right has.
This one?
Is that a mobile home on the right there?
This, I think is a...
About three feet away from this.
I think it's a trailer or an RV.
That's violating the...
Well, it's, it's a trailer, so...
It's a, I think it's a mobile home.
My question is, if the lot is sixty feet wide, and they want it reduced from eight to eight and eight, that leaves sixteen, that leaves forty-four feet. They're not kind of a forty-four foot wide mobile home?
No, they wouldn't. They're just asking that, they would not encroach into all of that, but they want to have the option of bringing, being able to bring in a double wide. The, the person who was interested in buying it doesn't know what size of home they want to bring into it at this time.
My question is, I don't know who owns that garage right to the left, we got right there, was right, um, whether they could acquire that and stuff, and then give them a room or whatever, because the easement going back, um, ever can be done that either to give them more...
So is there something specific that this action would impact other people, other property owners, uh, in terms of their, their enjoyment and use of their property? I, I understand, I'm questioning what, what the true objection really is.
Well, I don't know what the end result would be, why they object up there against people of other, there are other people that sign this, that are guilty. Because basically, like you said, it's their property, and they're approaching...
So, but you, you are an adjoining property owner, so maybe you could express your own concerns.
I apologize for, uh...
What will it do to your property and your use of your property?
Well, it's bringing in, well, I didn't realize it was only eight foot. I thought it was further than that, from the back of that trailer to my property. I didn't have any information of what different they planned to do at this spot. All I had was just the letter asking for the, or stating that there was going to be hearing and objection.
Actually, actually, as it relates to your property, there's no request to change that setback. I mean, it's already set at eight foot.
Correct.
And, and so it's, there's no change there with, with your property at all.
And actually, the intent is that this home would go away, and, uh, they would bring in a different home on the property. And it would still be eight feet from here and eight feet from here, and their request is to reduce this to eight and that to eight.
My name is Judy Bussi. I'm the, I'm the, I'm the sister to David Heinrich. When David asked me to look at this, we had a description, but we didn't have a map, so we thought that change was abutting his property. And that may be what led to the other discussion also. But the one concern is setting a precedent for other setbacks being changed as well. So that's what we were thinking about at the time, is the precedent of having more changes made throughout the development.
Mr. Sheriff? Dan, do you have a copy of that easement?
Uh, in my file, yes, I do.
Did it say anything, anything about what stipulation for the, 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 the floor?
Well, for ingress and egress to these lots in this area, including here and...
But it doesn't say specifically for use of a mobile home? But it doesn't say specifically for use of a mobile home or?
No, it's not specific.
And you're comfortable with that, that the easement would go for a big built house or modular or?
Or any type of house that. It's for ingress and egress to this lot.
So, it looks like there's a lot of other small lots, be to the, probably the west, this man was right, of the suburban property. Are those all, are those all meeting the setback requirements?
I'd have to review them, but a lot of them are probably grandfathered illegal non-conforming structures in this area. They've been there for, prior to 1994, are legally non-conforming in that way. If they were to replace them, the new structure would have to meet the required setbacks.
And I'd like to see that, a little through anybody.
This, yeah, go ahead.
Because there are a couple of garages that are, that can, a couple of feet of my property might, were there, were there. You know, some of them are really going down, you know, like I said, I'd like to see them replaced, but abide by the zoning requirements.
Anything else? Anyone else wish to come?
Yes, I am William Pew. I own that property. I purchased it quite some time ago and at the time, it was grandfathered anywhere it was, but I guess over the period of time that rules have changed or whatever. And I'm interested in getting rid of that property and I had a buyer board. He's the one that brought it up to me that the setbacks, you know, the front of my property was on that side because of the easement goes up that side. And then with a 25-foot setback on each side, it only gives me a 10-foot space to build anything on legally. So, I need to put a variance request in. I needed to put a variance request in, in order just to have that mobile home removed and brought a newer updated one. That one's in 1969 and it's, you know, it's had its fair days. So, the people that were interested in purchasing it wanted to pull it off and they wanted a larger home because that is a rather smaller, you know, 12-foot wide home. And they wanted to put at least a 24-foot on there and so, I spent my $700 and some dollars, you know, putting this variance request in. And I hope it gets approved. Thank you.
It would be nice if we knew, you know, if we knew for sure what they needed for variance versus just granting the eight-foot variance. I mean, if they're putting a 24-foot wide-
I mean, if you want to get back down to 10-foot, 12-foot, just anything to, you know, to help me out, would be fine with me.
I'd be inclined to approve the variance, but I'd hate to approve a variance for a setback that they don't need to put their additional home on.
Well, if that was positioned the other direction, it looks to me, if you look at that, that you would think the side of the lot would be on the left-hand side. And either the front of the lot would be on the north side there.
With, yeah, with this variance request, the lot is currently 60 feet wide. So, if you subtract 16 from that, that would be a 44-foot wide home that they could put on this property. You know, they would be eight feet from here. So, you know, if they run it this direction, they could go quite a bit narrower and still be able to put a double wide. Typical double wide is anywhere from 24 to 32 feet wide, being one of the widest ones you could have. So, if you wanted to narrow it down, you could say, you know, eight feet from here, eight feet from there, eight feet from here and still have maybe a 15-foot setback there.
So, in terms of the picture that you're showing right now, if you just move your focus from lot to lot, whether they're grandfathered or not, there are all kinds of setback issues there that say just wipe it out and redo it. Everybody's property is out of compliance except their grandfather did and it doesn't make any sense to me to say, but we're going to impose these standards on this property because of the ordinance. And that's why the variance is being applied.
Yeah, typically, you know, this lot would, you know, if you go down to this lot right here. Oh, can't get moving. But this lot, you know, sometimes these lots take access off of Carroll Street. So, the 25-foot setback would be from Carroll Street and it would be over here and then they'd have a 25-foot setback here for the main structure. The accessory structures are allowed to be eight feet from the rear property line. So, if they built on this property, they would have to, you know, if this was the frontier, they'd be 25, which would be about in here. Then it'd be eight feet from here, eight feet from here, and they'd have to be 25 feet here for the principal. Accessory structures are allowed to be eight feet from the rear property line, which would be like in a detached garage that, or a storage ship could actually have an eight-foot setback from here. In this case, because access is taken from here, they have to have a 25-foot setback here, 25-foot setback here, which greatly restricts this lot down to a 10-foot wide structure.
So, if you move over junk lot and screen and analyze one next there, that one?
This one? Yeah, in this case, depends on where he takes access. If he comes in this way into the property, this would be the 25. This would be the 25. It looks like it could be close to meeting those setbacks. And then you'd have an eight-foot here and an eight-foot, well, this would be also 25. In this case, this is an odd lot because it's a corner lot. They have 25, 25 setbacks and then this would be eight, this would be eight.
Mr. Carroll, I, you know, might be doing that variances, but in this case, I make a motion to grant 15-foot variance instead of eight foot. I'll give him 15, 30, I'll give him 30 feet, try to give a double wide in. And mainly for the reason that he's probably better off than most of those places out there. And I'd like to see an upgrade from a 69 single wide to hopefully a newer double wide. I think it will upgrade the neighborhood more than the HR. That's my motion. And I pulled the numbers out of there.
Is there a second? I'll second the discussion. Just clarifying, you said you, setback would be how much?
15.
15 from each side.
From each side?
Yeah, front and rear. But it would still be the eight-foot setback from the north and south property line, which is already allowed.
I would, I don't know, not be against-
Would you stage five, sir?
I would not be against allowing member 15-foot, but I'd go first, they'd not be fine with me.
If you go back to that sign. I'm wondering if- Mr. Pew, will you care to comment?
No, I was just sitting here, I heard my name, so.
I'm wondering if, if the eight-foot on the east side would still, I mean, that's the back of it.
Typically, if this was the front, that would be eight feet.
That would be eight feet.
And going to an eight-foot setback would allow for him to maybe build a deck if he wanted to, you know, otherwise it's restricted to the 15-foot even with the decks, if he were to put a deck on it.
Eight feet on the back, 15 on the front?
I like that one.
I would make a substitute motion to approve the variance with an eight-foot setback on the east side and a 15-foot on the west side. Okay, we have a substitute motion. Jay's kind of looking at this a little sideways. Do we need to amend anything?
You have a substitute motion, so you can vote on that.
Any further discussion of the substitute motion?
Yeah, one more thing. And there has to be four positive votes, correct?
Yes.
So, with only four members, these variances are getting a little risk.
Absolutely.
So, they don't.
And we validate the vote, we will have a roll call vote.
Husker?
Yes.
Davis?
What you calling, Peterson?
Davis?
Yes.
Holloway?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes. Motion carried.
So, now do we have to amend anything from the staff report or?
No, you're good to go.
Item G.
Item G is a variance request 1417 for John Donahue, Fisk Land Surveying as the agent. This is to reduce the minimum required 25-foot side yard setback to zero feet in the suburban residential district. If the county board approves this, we'd recommend one condition be applied. This was a discussion item in our staff meeting. We invited our state's attorney to our staff meeting and upon discussing this with him, a new interpretation of our zoning ordinance was done in regards to this. Other words, in regards to illegal non-conforming structure. It was determined that the new interpretation of the legal non-conforming determined that due to the outhouse not increasing the non-conformity of the property, no change. This variance is actually not needed and however, the applicant would still like to proceed in case it ever came up in the future, that a new interpretation came up in regards to this. So, he's still requesting to proceed with the variance. However, the applicant has also indicated they'd like a refund of their fees of the $370. As you're aware, this is property in Silver City. It's been in front of you numerous times in regards to the outhouse. The outhouse is over the property line. It did not increase the non-conformity as it was there prior. It was a grandfathered structure and that's why it was determined that this did not need to be addressed with this plating. Now, if the plating created a new property line and this thing was over the new property line, then it would have to be addressed. But being it's now, it was, did not change, it was there prior, they do not need the variance in order to proceed with this variance, or with the plating of this property. So, the applicant would like to continue with the variance request, but also would like a motion to have the fees refunded in the amount of $370.
They want to keep the way with it, but they want their money back.
Yes.
Doesn't make any sense.
Step program, please.
My name is Janelle Fink. I'm with Fisk Land Surveying. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Donahue and I'm hopeful that I can shed a little bit more light on what the request is here. When we started with this process, this was a simple lot line adjustment plat between two neighbors up in Silver City. We went through the layout process, identified the subdivision variances we needed and they also, staff identified that we needed a lot size variance, which is a zoning variance. So, we applied for those things, paid our fees for the subdivision variances, paid our fees for the lot size variance, sent our certified notices. There's about 40 of them that get sent out for that. When we come back from the minor plat, it also now becomes identified that we have to deal with the outhouse structure, that it either has to be removed and that's the way that the staff report was written for the minor plats, that it had to be removed. So, we entered the process trying to negotiate with the neighbor, Ms. Sears, to see if she could be willing to move it. We didn't get very far with that. So, staff indicated that if we applied for a zoning variance with a zero setback, that that would suffice. So, we spent about three months trying to work through the process with Ms. Sears and weren't able to get anywhere corresponded with her attorney. So, now we come back, we pay our fees again for another zoning variance and we do our certified mailings again, another $250 just for the postage. We go post a sign, we attend meetings for him. So, now we've invested again, you know, roughly another $500, $600, probably close to $700 by the time we've done our fees and our mailings and everything. And I want to say that I appreciate that staff came to the conclusion that now we don't need the variance and they did indicate that they would refund our application fee if we didn't want to move forward. However, if we'd come to this conclusion three months ago, we either could have applied for the variance at the same time we did the other mailings or we would have just said, hallelujah, we don't need a variance, we're ready to go forward, his plat would have been recorded. So, the reason that Mr. Donahue was saying, please refund my money, but go ahead and act on the variance, is he's out, the three months' time, he's out his $350 that he paid for the certified mailings, the time that it cost us to correspond with the neighbor, post a sign, attend hearings. So, I think that was where he was coming from. It's not that he doesn't want something for nothing, it's that in, he's willing to let, you know, I guess he feels that that's what he would like, is to refund, but have, refund just the application fee, but have you go ahead and prove the variance for his time and expense in the mailings. So, there's a little more to it than what it appears out to us.
If we grant a variance for something we don't need a variance on, what kind of sense does that make?
Well, the only thing that I'm concerned about is that what happens if we have new staff 10 years down the road, if we have a different state's attorney 10 years down the road and the decision or interpretation is different. If we have the variance today, it should be laid to rest and we shouldn't have to worry about it again.
Don't turn any of the change of mind.
They would never, yeah.
And I'm wondering why they changed their mind this time?
I was not involved with that decision, so I support it. We also thought in staff's interpretation, or not necessarily interpretation, but sometimes we see the bank come back if, to try to finance the property and say they see an encroachment and they want to take it care of prior to them financing the property. In other words, they want to see a variance prior to them being able to finance it. We have seen that in our office. According to Janelle, she rarely sees that, but we have seen it. So, that might be another reason why they want the variance.
Could Mr. Donahue have just tore down his half of the ship?
Possibly, yes.
Mr. Carroll mentioned about chainsaw or something. Jay, I know that you weren't involved in the discussion, but you approve of it. Seems to me after that Congress or something involved, actually. We'd have to pass it in order to figure out what kind of, but anyway, what's your thoughts about this? Why would we pass a variance if you don't need variance?
Well, there's a long statement here apparently from my colleague, Mr. Brody, that was involved in the process. I'm not going to read them all right now.
I may try to explain a little bit too. Part of his reasoning is-
No, I understand the change had been made in the lots process, but how can, how can we justify giving a variance for something that doesn't need variance? What kind of a precedent are we setting there?
Well, Jay Oliver with the state's attorney's office, so one of the things I can say is certainly this is an opinion and you don't always follow the opinions of the state's attorney's office. You have that authority and there's nothing wrong with that. So, you can have an opinion of your own that a variance would be needed for something like this. So, what I'm saying is that from what I've sat here and listened to, the facts as I'm gathering them, and from Mr. Brody's opinion, I don't, I don't have any objection to that. I would support his reason on that from what I've listened to as I sat here. Given the history that was just provided to you with the expanse and the different processes, I understand there- I understand their request, and there's some fairness and merit and maybe logic in that as well. So you could have your own opinion that, based on the request, that you don't want the State's Attorney's Office, over time, maybe ten years, twenty years from now, changing that opinion, which could happen, I can't deny that. So on your own opinion, you can take up this variance and pass it and put it to rest, put it down. So I would support you doing exactly that. I mean, I see no reason why you can't legally do that. You certainly have that authority.
So how do we get that in amendments, I'm asking, with the advice of the State's Attorney's Office?
That you're approving a variance on my recommendation? That, I guess. Put it in the minutes.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve this variance with the one stipulation or recommendation from the planning commission that it only applies to that portion of the building that is currently existing, and also that we refund this gentleman his money.
Is there a second?
I have a second motion.
Any further discussion? And then do you clarify the amount of money that's going to be refunded in what it's for?
Three hundred and twenty dollars. Three hundred is the actual application cost. Twenty dollars is for the property owners list that was created, so that he knew who to send the proper letters to. And then there's a fifty dollar signed deposit that would be returned anyway, once he returns the variance sign.
So the twenty dollar list, would we have already had that from the previous?
If it's a certain amount of time, we have to create a new list because it may change.
And how much time, how long did that?
I think we used two or three months. And just, just, it did change.
Just for clarification though, this gentleman's already paid for this one time.
Correct.
And then we had to redo it again, so then it's made a second...
Yes, for a different variance request, but however, if we would have caught it the first time, he could have put the two variance requests under one application.
Okay, any further discussion? Not, we have a roll call again, please.
Mr. Chair?
Could we put into the end of the minutes, Mr. Donahue, under the advice of the State's Attorney's Office, is it permissible to issue a variance to a property that doesn't need variance?
Not by taking the money out of your budget.
That'd be an idea.
State's Attorney did seem to be laughing a lot back there.
Listen, I'll just note it in there, we get down the road, down the road, it's been ten years, something gets away. We can do this for it. Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Holloway?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
Okay. Item H.
We've come out of a board adjustment.
Why would you want to do that? We haven't had a selection. Okay, Mr. Moser, do we have a second?
Yes.
Moser, a second to... Jordan is a board of commissioners, all the previous AIs.
Hi.
What would you move to, item H?
Item H is a vacation of the section line, fourteen oh one, Jay Allen Johnson, to vacate two thousand feet of section line right away to these types of sections, four and five, in Palmer Gulch Campground. Staff would recommend approval of the vacation with three conditions. It's located right within the Palmer Gulch campground. Property's currently zoned by the service. They had previously gone through a section line vacation back in two thousand two, or two thousand one, where they relocated it to the property line. However, now they've discovered that there's still an encroachment with the section line of the cabins. That's in this area right in here, the section line is in this area right in here. So in order to correct that, they're vacating that whole section line, including what was relocated back in two thousand one. Would also give them a little more buildable area, because right now there's a sixty-six foot right of way, plus an additional twenty-five foot setback to that. So it'd actually create a sixty-six foot wider buildable area along those property lines. So staff is recommending approval. We did, went through the auditor's office, they collected all the petitions, and that was verified and approved by the auditor's office.
Any other questions or comments?
I take it there's not a road on that section line?
No, there is not.
It ends up probably in the forest?
Yes. It's adjacent to Forest Service land on the west side of the property, and it's the KOA campground where the section line currently is.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Then refresh my memory, why we require signature petition to vacate the section line?
State law requires that if you're vacating any public right of way, you have to collect a petition of one percent of the last gubernatorial reelection in order to vacate any public right of way. Section lines are public right of way. I don't know the exact state codified law, but Jay, it's not with his head either.
Yeah, that's it. I remember that. Okay, any other questions or comments?
I make a motion to, to vacation section line in fourteen day, oh one, with three conditions.
Second. Moser, a second? Any further discussion? Very down those, very to the motions, say aye?
Aye.
Post, Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
Right up to the chair. The only thing I... I want to bring up at this point in time is that I had a phone call last night, and we have a formal request filed in the office relative to the ongoing fireworks mess in Rapid Valley. And there has been, over time, numerous people begging for some kind of relief from the ongoing problem in Rapid Valley. And my understanding, Denny, that you and you'll never are going to meet next Monday to try to develop a strategy?
Good morning, Denny Gordon, Paint County Fire Minister, here again. Monday afternoon, Jay Alderman and I are going to sit down, and we're going to talk about fireworks, but also the county's burn ban ordinance of the past two years ago, and then modify it a year ago, just to make sure we're all together. But Polly did forward that complaint, request to me. State law, to get a total complete ban on fireworks would require legislative action. The legislature's only, they believe, will call it a small loophole if the fire danger is of a certain, very high or extreme, then the commission has the ability to prohibit during a small, but not on the Fourth of July. I believe.
Third, fourth.
Third and fourth, yeah, but anyway.
Yeah, and I'm seeking any particular resolution, but... We, you know, this impacts the sheriff's department and all kinds of people in a, and have to believe that if they can have meetings in Rapid Valley for a sex offender moving into the community, that something as blatantly disturbing as this is to those folks down there, that some kind of effort needs to be mounted that fosters some kind of civic responsibility of some kind. And I would encourage you to expand your committee, the meets next Monday.
If you can do that, I'm not sure. We can certainly put out some news releases, I'm just trying to, off the top of my head. What you have in the valley, but all over outside of Rapid City is that fireworks are prohibited inside Rapid City, with some minor examples, camps and stuff.
And that doesn't work very well, you think?
And that sometimes doesn't work very well. So then, a lot of the residents that buy the fireworks, except that they're outside, now they're also prohibited within one mile of the city limits. But then it's an enforcement issue with the law, and that's a pretty tough one, too.
Black Hills Fire Protection District is, it's prohibited by statute. This is one of those situations, again, where the laws addressing this topic generally are more favorable to municipalities because they have specific statutes that authorizes the complete authority to absolutely ban everything. Where the county falls in the other statutes that prohibit counties from doing anything to prohibit fireworks on a few of those days. In other words, our legislature said, we're going to have fireworks on the Fourth of July, at least outside of municipalities, and ban outside of Fire Protection District.
Well, given the, the amount we can, possible debate here, but given the parameters of the law and the enforcement sort of thing, I still think we have an obligation to think outside the box a little bit, and either find a place where the people who are entertained by this, to come and do it without disturbing so many people, private citizens who don't indulge in the activity. And I'm suggesting that there is some kind of effort put toward modifying that situation.
We'll certainly invite, I'll say Sheriff Thole, or whoever you'd like to have come. We'll be more than happy to look at those and see what we can think of.
Yeah, and in the past, of course, we tried to apply some common sense to impose on people through public service announcements, that use some common sense, even though state law outside municipalities allows you to use fireworks on the Fourth, I think a couple of days, it's the third through the fifth, something like that. Use some common sense, I mean, when the fire index is higher or extreme, you probably shouldn't do it. But, you know, obviously, you can't, you can't get everybody to follow. My library's in sometimes.
The next item is item twenty-one, proposed resolution to the last session. Do you have anything at this point in time, or? Is there a process that you'd like to see put in place to draw together those resolutions? Mr. Husker, do your...
I don't know, I just, I only put the message out there. Time to get him in if we're interested in it, and I think it'll be at the July meeting of the Black Hills Association, and I'm not sure the date of that right at the moment, but it's going to be in Sturgis. So we've got one meeting, maybe two, to do something. I don't have any right off the top of my head.
We just had that discussion about fireworks. Maybe then, maybe we should see if we could give the county tuition association to support given counties the same authority, have the state give the counties the same authority they do the cities, so that we can, so we can eliminate this war that goes on around Rapid Valley.
I'm sure you're well acquainted with that war.
Yeah, I am. Well, and people, people, you go out there the morning after, and the streets are littered, people have got bottle rockets through their window screens, and, I mean, it's a mess. And we ought to have the authority by statute to get this done. We've tried in the past, I know, but it sure doesn't mean that we shouldn't try again.
I think we should. And I remember not too long ago that somebody burnt the hay shed down, down here in the feed store. Maybe, maybe we should contact the city and see if we can't send them all down to the sewer plant and do their fireworks down there.
Well, we could open up the fairgrounds.
To the city.
It's our property.
We had that, remember, and they got a chain, because we weren't looking. She's here for June, we're going to lie to them. Okay, well, I think we'll just...
Well, we were, we probably have a resolution somewhere around...
We did this last week.
Couple of years ago, that I know we ran around legislature and apparently it up, you know, one or two words changed, but it made much difference. We will probably find something in this meeting.
So we have some time to finalize any talks we have in that regard. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm wondering what happened with our AG deal that we were talking about, doing the summer study, and also taking the legislature next, next legislative session. The AG, Chris Gill. I would assume the AG task force that Senator Roden chairs will continue to be... We find that out. We have to set some, set up a meeting with them.
A month ago or so, I had been given a notice that sometime in July, late July, I think, was going to be maybe the first meeting of that AG task force. And I passed that along to Commissioner Problem, who I think is going to get in contact with the folks that were part of our committee here, and start to set something up. And frankly, until you mentioned just now, I've not had further contact with Commissioner Problem, to see if someday is kind of making... I know there was a plan, obviously, that we would be up here, probably sometime this summer, to address those issues and work on legislation.
Well, I guess the reason I brought it up was because of this deal that was handed to me by some people that, but there are gentlemen out there bought seventy acres for ten thousand, six hundred dollars an acre. And the last assessment on it was eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars for equalization. But then it went under the AG stipulation, and it was ten thousand, seven hundred that they were charged taxes on. They paid a hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-seven tenths in twenty thirteen for the land taxes on an eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar parcel of land. And here is the listing with the realtor. The property is now for sale for two million, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
I could sure understand why they couldn't afford a big mortgage.
We've had that too, yeah. Especially my land taxes are about eleven, twelve hundred for two and a half acres. Okay, do we have any committee reports? I have one. On July second, at the Civic Center, the Tops and Blue Concerts, sponsored by the Ninth Pick Air Force, will be at the Civic Center on that night, and it's open to the public free of charge. And they put on a fantastic show.
I have nothing.
All right?
I don't.
Okay, items to the public. I have three, ten, three nights. Polly, you got anything to say?
I'll make the, I'll make the final motion.
Well, we have an executive session.
We do?
Yes, you do. You have two personnel items.
Make motion, go into the executive session for personnel and litigation. Moser, a second, all the papers, say aye?
Aye.
I oppose, Mr. Chair. Most of care.